I'd like to ask Pastor Tim Walker with the first back of this church.
Would y'all pray with me? Lord, you say in your word in Romans thirteen that there is no authority except from God, that those that exist have been instituted by God, that all authority is under authority. And this is because you are all powerful, you're all-knowing, you're all wise, you're holy, you're just, you're all loving, and you're worthy of all praise and glory. And we give you praise today and acknowledge that we are a people under your good authority. And you also say in Romans thirteen that these civil authorities that we have here are servants of God, that they are ministers of God to carry out righteousness, justice, and goodness in our land. And so I humbly ask that you give them wisdom from above, that their decisions will be filled with fairness and love of neighbors, that their discussions between themselves and with our citizens here will be full of humility, mercy, and grace, and that all the decisions made here today would be for the common good of the citizens of Harrison County, especially for those among us that are the least among us. And we confess that we have failed you in many ways in decisions that we have made. And we thank you for the grace and the mercy and the forgiveness and the love that you have shown us through the Lord Jesus Christ, our mediator. So forgive us, we pray, because of his life, his death, his resurrection for our sins. And come, Holy Spirit, so that everything that they do here today and we do here today, even as citizens, will glorify you and be good for the people of Harrison County in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Beautiful, thank you. The rise of John's, hoping ladies in the pledge.
Praise be to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. All right.
Cheers, group.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, we've got some handouts to the agenda of most of which I'd like to make it the end of the meeting, but there is one, is he here, Mr. McCabe?
I'm not sure. Yes, there he is, I think. Renee? Renee?
Renee?
Renee? He can come in. Is that Dr. McCabe?
So, Dr. McCabe, if you'll come here, please. He made a request on Thursday to speak to the board concerning a sale that was resented by this board on some wetlands near the property. So we'll give you about 30 minutes, or if you need it, and just tell us, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Matthew McCabe, and I want to thank y'all for having me here today. I'm here with my wife Holly. Basically, we own the property at the end of Plantation Lane. This is where we're planning to build our home here in the next couple of years. The northern border of our property borders the Development Commission's land, and basically they've got a strip of wetlands, I guess, that goes down the edge of the industrial seaway there. But basically, what we're trying to do is to purchase that so that we kind of have a little buffer between us and the commercial traffic of the seaway and the, you know, all the barges and everything that dock in that area, because we're building our personal home and we're so close to it. A couple of things about the land there, there's a tree line down the edge of that marsh that basically, where it borders us, we can't, you know, get there to secure it or anything like that. And the land that the Development Commission has is landlocked, I guess they have to cross our property to get to it, so they can't get out to keep it up and to do those things. Right now, there's a lot of debris from the storms and everything that have washed up. One of the, you know, the big things that we want with our personal home being there, we want to be able to maintain it and keep it clean and to clean up after things, things like that. This is an area that when you come into Gulfport Throughback Bay, this is the first property that you really see with the industrial seaway and the Bernard coming through there. We want it to represent the city well, we want it to look well, and, you know, not be an assore. And that's basically why we want to, you know, if we can purchase it to do that, just to keep it up and to keep that buffer zone there, that's our biggest thing. Couple of things about the property, when a few weeks ago, my wife and I, and our daughter Collins live just about half a mile down the road, we'd go down in the afternoons, we'd feed the turtles and things like that, she loved it. We've got a couple that she's named out there. But we were out a couple of weeks ago, and actually, when we were there, we heard a gunshot that was pretty close. We didn't, you know, didn't really, didn't know where it came from, really, you know, what was going on, it scared us. We went back home, about two, three weeks later, my dad and I were actually walking through the woods on the northern portion of my property, and we found a deer blind that had been set up back there. Somebody, and there was tracks where somebody had come through, I guess, the power line right away across the Development Commission's land and into the corner of ours, and actually had been back there illegally hunting. And that's what we figured was the gunshot. What it, you know, scares me because this is my family, my little daughter, you know, playing out here and running around. We want to be able to keep that up, and if there is trespassers back there, be able to prosecute, you know, as it is right now, if they're on the Development Commission land, I have no right to be able to do that or to, basically, to do anything to police it.
They're trespassing, whether they're, whether they're corrupt your land or the Development Commission?
Uh-huh. And what I've been told by the Development Commission is they don't have the manpower to be able to keep it up and to police those things out there. That's, you know, us being right beside it, you living there, we'd be a lot, lot better off to be able to do that, those things for them.
These are the wetlands that we were going to use for future mitigation, so it can never be developed. I mean, the buffer is always going to be there, always.
What I was told, because I think when we went through everything with the Development Commission, they had checked into that, they said that they had a pretty large bank of wetlands and that they haven't had any trouble in the past with selling little tracts of wetlands like that, because that was one of the big first hurdles that we had to get through on that stage of things, from what I understood with them. And I think they discussed that in their meetings also.
Bill told us last week that he'd be willing to pay to put up a fence around it. Now, when you called office last week, he did send me deer blind, a ton of litter, even vandalization on something that was there, he'd be willing to put up a fence.
And I've got some pictures printed out.
And it's extremely low, it was so wet you couldn't even walk down there.
Yeah. And it's, I've got some.
Why can't we just put up no trespassing signs, rather?
Well, I've actually got no trespassing signs up right now.
We can do that, unless the board has another suggestion.
Do we need those credits, Bill? Is, do you have?
I think there's an issue with the value of those credits.
That's the problem.
See, they're not that valuable.
Like, are they bound to that one?
Credits themselves will not be that valuable.
This situation's not that different than when we sold a piece of land on Wolf River, which we had posted no trespassing signs, there were people trespassing and swinging off the trestle. At that time, there was no issue. When I first got here, I checked, because we have wetlands in a lot of places. If we could use these for wetlands bank and wetland mitigation, the answer was no, there's not enough contiguous acreage together to make it work.
It's 24 acres.
24 acres.
You have to have 300, 300 to 1,000 acres to put it in a mitigation bank. It has to be approved by, and I have a document from a wetlands consultant, Patrick Chubb from Mississippi Power, that I'll be glad to present to the supervisors, that basically says it's not economically feasible, or would it even be approved or accepted by the Corps to take this 25 acres and put it in a bank and use it, because in its current state, it's never going to be any different than what it is.
Right.
And in fact, what it's saying, I think, Bill, if I can put it in layman's terms, is that those wetlands are so wet that they have no value to mitigate, because nobody could ever use them anyway.
Correct.
And that's just in layman's terms, how the Corps says, that's what they say. Why say it's sad as mitigation when in fact it can never be used to start with?
Correct. And from a hunting standpoint, we just have the sheriff go and run five hunters off social. We have posted no hunting signs, we've taken down the tree stands that were put on our industrial property, so we're having to communicate with the sheriff on a regular basis to run hunters off.
Some customers out there who won't have that problem.
Well, we've tried, and, but, you know, there's a different set of rules for guns in the county versus guns in the city.
There's what's on the table.
Hunting was brought up, I just wanted y'all to know that's an issue, even with posted no trespassing signs, it doesn't keep people from trespassing or hunting.
One of the other things too, that, you know, I've kind of discovered is that property's not on the tax rolls for the city right now. If we were to purchase it, it would put them on the tax rolls, so the city would be making revenue off of taxes.
The city?
County.
Or the county, I'm sorry.
Wrong place.
Well, it would be making money for the area, and that, you know. I think that would be a bonus.
She's always listening, I told her.
Okay, sir, thank you, I want to talk to the board now to see what your pleasure is.
Thank you, thank you for your time. If y'all have any questions at all, don't hesitate to ask it.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement. And I would ask Mr. Labor to get us a copy of the letter from the Corps.
It's not from the Corps, it's from a consultant.
We need a Corps letter.
Yeah, that says we cannot use those for mitigation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Good. I'm not sure, Bill, I think you can, but the point is, it's of really no value, or am I just reading?
There's no value, but more than likely, in his opinion, the Corps would not accept that to begin with as a mitigation.
Because they don't, can't be used anywhere. If it were land that could be used, then it placed, it placed a value on that wetland. But, so, nobody's going to do anything with it to start with, why use it, why mitigate it?
I just want to be sure this is legal, because I want something that says that you can sell it, because it is wetlands, make sure it hadn't been used for mitigation purposes before.
In the past.
In the past, I mean, there's a lot of questions on this.
I have a document for that, for Paul Deagle, that addresses all that, so if you want me to give it to you now, I can, or if you don't.
I'm talking about for this gentleman.
I think a letter from the Corps will be appropriate at this time. A letter from the Corps, simple letter, showing them exactly where it is and how much it is, 24 acres.
And get some kind of price other than, because I was told maybe there's a big difference on what it's really worth. I guess it depends on.
I'll say this.
Justified, yeah. Okay.
A lot of individuals own weapons.
Oh, I.
I don't think the Corps is concerned with who owns it, I think the Corps would be concerned as whether they're disturbed or not.
Correct.
So you, I think I own some weapons.
What do you do?
I don't know for sure, but I think I own some weapons. They don't care who owns it, just as long as you don't bother.
I know, but that was not.
Or disturb it.
That's not, was not part of what was presented to us prior to. So you just have a little bit more homework to do, you're not living there yet, so with that time, right? So we'll just, if you'll just put something together for us, we'll address some of these issues and then bring it back and we'll look at it again. Y'all heard that?
And I think the Corps could look at it and tell us whether or not it can be used for mitigation or not, instead of just somebody from the pound.
Okay, we need to move on. Number one, order taken off the table, item number nine of the January 4, 2021 meeting, considering auto accident claim of Kate would have the amount of $3,001.61.65. Is Kate here? Do we have a motion to take off the table?
She here?
Do we have a motion to take off the table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr., thank you so much. Is Mr. Kate Ladner in the house? Come on up, I need to give your name and address.
Morning. My name's Kate Ladner, I'm a firefighter paramedic for Harrison County. During Hurricane Zeta, I was on duty at Station One on La Zanna School Road. During the hurricane, our engine bay doors that cover our apparatus were all ripped off. One door actually flew and landed on top of my 2017 Chevy Silverado that I personally own. And what I'm asking the board to do is, in any capacity, if there's any kind of assistance to repair my vehicle. Earlier that year, I did have an accident claim that I was involved in, my insurance premium doubled. So I'm trying really hard not to claim this on my own personal insurance, but I did get two quotes, the lower quote is listed on minutes, and just asking if there's any sort of assistance for that.
Okay, I apologize, I don't think I took a vote on taking off the table, all those in favor sitting by the eye, all those opposed, motion carried. Now we'll go to number two, consider auto exit a claim of Kate Ladner in the amount of $3,001.61.65. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Tricia, I know this is kind of the board's decision, correct? So I'm fine with paying it.
I do take.
But how do y'all do it?
I don't have a problem with paying it, I just wonder if our insurance would pay for it, since it was storm damage.
No. No. It's going to be under the same exception that they would say that you could deny the claim that you're an act of God, and besides, that's your deductible part, even if it did your.
It's going to be more.
Okay. Final question.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes, second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Now, do I need a third motion to actually approve the payment? So I'll take a motion to approve the payment to Mr. Ladner for his $3,001.61.65.
Motion. Can we say to his, whoever his local is with, that company and himself together, so that the work gets done?
Write the check to the.
To whoever, whoever he is.
Yeah, well, I'm in your motion.
I'm in my motion to include a low quote from two quotes received by Mr. Ladner.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carried, to get with Pam and to take out the check.
And thank you, thank you for this mistake.
Yes, thank y'all, thank you.
Keep up the good work, take care of yourself, be safe.
Item three, recognize Matt McDonald, Executive Director of Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission Center and World Renowned Vaccinations.
Good morning.
And a proud reward.
Thank y'all for letting me come in front of y'all today. We have offers from the city of Biloxi for four out of five parcels that we own. There's still a fifth parcel that's in question, we're still working through, because it's directly behind our parking garage, and there's some ingress egress issues that have to be addressed, to where those 580-plus parking spaces to the west of Pop's Ferry Road won't be adversely affected. So that's why that parcel's not on the table today, but the other four are. Our board has accepted those from a price standpoint. We have checked out with the previous appraisals on the front piece, the most valuable piece that was part of the old Holiday Insight, and their offer is definitely in line.
Okay, so we'll move to the action, I already see it.
I might add, though, to let y'all know, there is a lien on two of those parcels with Bancorp's out, and all of the proceeds that we get are going towards reducing the amount of the lien.
So with that being said, I don't think this is correct, but I'll read it. Order approving the, it says purchase, I think it means sale, the sale of real property by the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission to the city of Biloxi, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, okay, now make sense. I was calling late.
We're not buying, we're selling.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah, we're selling.
I saw that, I'm sorry. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carried.
Before you get to your next item, would it be okay if I kind of give y'all just some quick updates about a few things that are happening at your building?
Sure.
First of all, from our financial position, Marlon, you be proud, there's still over $2 million in our liquid accounts that we can access. We received another round of PPP money. There is another pot of money that I thought we would be able to qualify for, and we would be able to qualify for, but it's a very finite amount, it's called shuttered venues operators grants, and it's being run through SBA. Problem is, the people that lost 90% of their income during a pandemic are in line first, the people that lost 70% of their income are in line second. Because of the hard work of our team and our ability to think through how we could continue to do some things during the pandemic, we only lost 57% of our revenue. Therefore, we're going to be so far back in line that the amount of money they allocated is $15 billion. And the dilemma that we were in is that if you apply for the second round of PPP money, you're ineligible for this money. Well, the PPP money was a bird in a hand. This was maybe two or three birds that might be in the bush, and our board, and I concur, opted to go for the bird in the hand. That extra PPP money that we just got last week in the amount of $387,000 will more than get us through what I think might be the last of our really, really tough months, and that's going to be February and March. In April, in April, we're going to be doing a comedian back in our ballroom socially distanced, we're going to be doing the Crawfish Music Festival outdoors socially distanced, just like we had done the other outdoor shows last fall. We're going to be doing more high school graduations this year with the same protocol as we had last year. And all of the schools are really appreciative, and they're really glad that we have taken the measures we've taken where they can have graduation. So we're seeing business starting to come back even more. Every week, we get more and more calls about how can we do this, or how can we do this? So I'm very optimistic that once we get through March and get into April, that I won't ever have to come to you about getting in that trestle. That's very important to me. I know it's important to you, and the rest of y'all. Now, one other thing, Beverly, you came to see the locker room, that's our latest creation, and I have to give my Assistant Executive Director, Michelle Miniman, total credit. She designed it along with the folks from Mashada, yeah, from Mashada Patana and Levy. They all stepped up and it was a collaborative effort. It's going to be a wonderful addition and asset to the building. And the vaccination site, I can't tell you how smooth it is running, they have now increased their amount that they are vaccinating each day to.
900.
900 a day. And they anticipate that going even higher as they have access to more vaccine. So I want to thank y'all for your continued support and trust in what we're doing. We're proud that we can be a part of this major solution to get this pandemic behind us, we're very proud of that.
Now, y'all know where the locker room is, right?
I know.
No, I didn't think so.
It's a VIP.
I said you got to have a design on the locker room.
It's a VIP area that will have upscale food and alcohol and restrooms and private entrance, and will include reserved parking, and most of your newer facilities have these kind of amenities that we're competing against. It's also, will be, become a revenue generator for us that will help us entice even bigger shows to come to the area, once people are comfortable coming back in for bigger shows.
It's like the Green Run, but bigger?
It's like a suite.
Yeah, it's much bigger than the Green Run, much bigger than, it's like, it's like twice the size of the Green Run.
Okay.
It's like a suite, but it's not privately owned, so anybody can buy a ticket and go in it.
That's exactly right.
Which is the difference.
There'll be an upcharge on your ticket if you want to, if you want to access that place.
And I include your.
What is the capacity of it?
200.
200?
200.
The locker room is.
So just to give you an example, Marlon.
It's a floor-to-sea-wolves locker room.
So what are you going to call the real locker rooms?
We'll think of a new name.
It's a floor-to-sea-wolves. Where athletes dress?
Yeah. I'll let you, I'll let you give me some suggestions. Marlon, to give you an idea, on some of the higher-end shows like a Reba McIntyre or Chris Stapleton, or Kiss, or some of those types of shows, access to that room could be as high as $100 added to the cost of the ticket. And there's so many people out there that don't mind paying for higher experiences. And, and so, you do the math, 200 times, or 200 people times $100, that's $20,000. But we do have some expenses, because we will provide food, food, your food will be included, and the beauty of the room is that Levy has set up an area where they can cook inside the room, right there in front of everybody, so you get that smell and you get that sense of being in a really nice place.
And it's got private parking, or reserved parking?
Reserved parking and private restrooms and a private entrance.
Like the restaurant, they're nice to you.
Thank y'all again, we're trying very hard.
Good job, Matt.
Good job.
It's not the easiest.
The high school state, that's what I play out, I was just informed, they're going to go back to the old format this year because of the pandemic.
Got it. He wants to come back in 2022?
Hopefully he'll come, yeah, that's what we're shooting for.
Tell Mr. Tillman we would love to have him back.
That's what you're shooting for? No, pun intended.
Thank y'all.
And Matt, one more thing, my daughter's basketball team loves the Harlem Globetrotters, so if you could get them back, it's the last time we were able to do.
That was the very last event that we did, was the Harlem Globetrotters. I was sitting there court side when, when my official scorer saw on his phone that the NBA had shut down, I knew we were in trouble. But they are rebooked, we do have them rescheduled for later in 2021, so tell your daughter, sit tight, they're coming. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Civil letter number five, order authorizing repair and resurfacing of a service lot at the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission Center, as per the terms of the MOE between the Coast Coliseum Commission and Harrison County. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Matt. Now, let's recognize Mr. Bobby Trossler with Parks and Rec to discuss concession, sales, recording, etc. First, let me preface this.
Is it correct?
Let me preface this first of all by telling you that I did get a note from our current concessionaire, Mr. Greg Bankston, who has decided not to continue his services. He did offer to do the, in order not to leave you in a lurch, to continue with the soccer until you can find somebody, but basically, he said there's not enough revenue to offset the cause incurred. So we know this may leave you in a bind, but we will be willing to continue to work concessions at county farm until a new vendor is secured. He also took a check to Mr. Trossler, I apologize, today to pay for January sales at the county farm. So, this was it, that is part of our official minutes, okay?
Excuse me, he paid for the county farm, but didn't pay for the other smaller ones?
I don't know, this is.
Well, he's only opened that county farm.
That's only, yeah, he's only there.
Okay.
COVID didn't allow baseball to open up, so.
What about the last, last year we didn't open up, no, that's right.
Well, no, we opened the county farm, but I don't, I don't know where that stands.
So I think you got two issues, one's parking charges, your hourly rates, your parking charges, and we're open to anything you got to suggest for these concessions.
Well, I actually talked to Greg Friday after I talked to you, and so I kind of understand a little better now what his frustration is, is what you and I discussed on Friday as well, and that's that you have four or five bad weekends where you make $100, $125, $125, then you have a big weekend, which was a great day of soccer, it was the last weekend of January, he thought he would do well, however, they came in because their contract allows vendors, they can have up to four vendors out there. And so they brought in street vendors and, you know, what he anticipated being with six employees out there for a real busy day, it turned out to not be so busy at all.
So we agreed to allow the soccer people bring up to four, up to six?
Eight.
Eight?
Eight.
But it wasn't just food.
But it wasn't just, it wasn't just food.
No, everybody, they were going to bring in any type of vendor, it was not just food, it was, you know, sporting apparel or all, whatever they do at soccer, I don't really know, but it wasn't just food, so we have no idea what they were.
But this was.
They would be competing for the same dollar.
Yes.
And that's what the issue is.
And just to sort of put that in another perspective, I'm very close with the Parks and Rec director at Diablo, his name is Troy Soshe. I actually called Troy, because I know Troy's out for an RFP right now, trying to get somebody, the person who handled his concessions in Diablo passed away, and that was O'Neal, the O'Neal family. Well, he passed, and they're having to go out for a rebid. He hadn't, he's been out for 10 days and he hasn't had one RFP.
That's the problem.
They're, they were, they were out there years ago, they, just vendors just aren't out there nowadays, you know, to come in and do it. I don't, you know, again, like you and I discussed, the food permit issue, you know, I had mixed feelings about that, because in one hand, you got Little La Zanna and Wes Harrison trying to operate a concession stand that might make $50 a day, and then And then on the other hand, you got soccer, you know, on a tournament might make $5,000 a day. But I don't know how you do something to soccer that you don't do to Little Lasanna over there. You'll never contract those out.
No.
And so, I mean, you're barely able to get somebody to do soccer at this point, you know, the way it looks. So I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know where it goes.
So do y'all want to just reg off or to get us through the soccer?
Soccer's over, soccer's actually over now for the next.
Okay.
Well, they, I'm sorry, I take that back. They were rained out Saturday, so they'll go again next Saturday. And then they're off for a month, I believe.
So what gives us basically what, three, four weeks to come up with something?
Now, the, now, the flip side of that is you do, it gives you a month to figure out soccer. However, baseball season and softball season are starting in less than a month.
Well, even at the groups that wanted to take over their own concessions.
They want to do their own, so I have no problem.
It's hard for them for them.
Well, that's, so what about the food permit? Are we just going to give them to sign with some kind of waiver or something? Because that's kind of what started all this.
What does the health department say about that?
That if you sell food to the public, you're supposed to have a permit. So now that's on their website.
How do you go about getting a permit? I don't want to.
Well, you gotta have a service saving course. Inspection and then they'll inspect every so often. Then you have to take that service saving course, which is a couple of weeks long, I think. It's not long, but, but you know, these little mom and pop places, I seriously doubt they're gonna. And it's a hundred fifty bucks. But they could do like the little girl did at the fairgrounds. She got somebody to run it under their catering food permit license. So I don't know, you know, this is kind of over my head because I don't have a lot of ball fields in my district. So I'm kind of leaning to y'all to see what you want to do.
I have to, because most everyone knows now, because we've been on the front page.
I think it's fine to allow them as a fundraising method to have. I mean, when I was growing up, that was always the case. Our teams got to run concession as long as they have a license, right?
Yeah, but that's the problem. Although, and then maybe they got a license, fine.
Or they can get one. They have to show you the license before we allow it. Whatever y'all think.
Or Tricia, can you?
What do you think?
I'm the one, you and I have a problem.
Yeah, I can.
I, I don't
He's a sporting guy, that's why.
I don't have a problem at all with the concessions going back to the, to the leagues. However, I do want it, the safety of the public. And I don't want our county to be liable or the team to be liable because they can't, they don't have the money to go lawsuit, you know.
Can we ask our board attorney, make if there is some kind of waiver that you can draft that if these leagues run those concession stands, they either A produce a food permit, which is what I would prefer, or B come up with some kind of waiver that they're, won't
Difficult. The question is how difficult it is to get a permit.
There was a waiver. I I'm not familiar with, Marlon. I mean, even in the school business, we we didn't have to do that.
No.
You know, I had, I had, I had ten concessions going on a night and we didn't do it. But I do understand Ms. Martin's concern. I do. I get that. So I would just say I'd like to look it up and see what it says.
Don't you do a research?
I will. I don't mind doing that.
Also, a facility like, excuse me, a facility like what I have out there, the Haminot Ball Field. We don't have a league game there. When kids go out there and practice, they may not make play or nothing. We don't have a league. So if there's an event comes up.
Yeah.
The concession stand goes to who? You know, whoever hosts the event can have their own concession stand. Where I would see it because I don't have a league.
Right.
It pops up every blue moon if something may happen after that. I'm going to keep the fields up and we go out there and play and practice. It gets used, but I don't have a league. So this contract that the league has, you want to apply me, I'm assuming.
I understand you got to be proactive. You want to protect yourself. But at the same time, historically, we've never had any problems with concession stands, just like at the school, Bobby, or little leagues, anything. I'm not aware of any, any problems that that has occurred or any liability issues, any lawsuits, never have. But that doesn't mean it can't happen, so I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. Let's don't make a mountain out of a molehill. If you can get a waiver, let's see what you can come up with.
And we had a waiver, we, there was a waiver that soccer had that Harrison County had to sign along with whoever was running their concession stand. I didn't go through that waiver in detail, but that's what was in place prior to us contracting it out when they were contracting it out.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
So what you get with Tricia?
I'd be glad to, yeah.
See what you can come up with.
Well, all the cities have gone to contracts, and that's what we were going by. All the cities, for some reason, it was, I think, we think it was liability, went to contracts, Diablo Vale, Biloxi, Gulfport, they all have contracts on their concessions. So we were trying to follow suit.
And it's, and it's easy for them because they run single location things. We have eight, you know, from a hundred people to 500 people. Or or in soccer's case, 1,500 people, you know.
And the fairgrounds.
And the fairgrounds.
It'd be the same situation.
Absolutely.
Tricia.
Um, basically, we can do however y'all want to do that. But while we're in there, we're going to have to go back and undo the soccer contract and the contract with Socia and take the concessions out. But also, while we're in there, can we go ahead and address the parking?
Yeah, which I haven't.
There was one other thing, there's parking.
The parking charge and the hourly charge.
And the hourly charge.
Because I know we're going to get complaints about them charging for parking already at home costs. And I don't even have the fields.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, would you
So just prohibit, prohibit charges for parking?
I would think, I don't know, you know, we've beat this dead horse to death.
I know, like I said, I don't have parks, so it's kind of hard for me to dive in. But if you have to keep the facility, you ought to be able to do what you want to do with the parking. So I'll see here.
The, the, the argument was that at county farm, there's, it's so open. There's not a gate to charge admission as opposed to say at Three Rivers, she walked through the gate. And so they were charging to walk through the gate at Three Rivers, whereas they were charging by the car at county farm, but it was backing up down the road.
The traffic.
The traffic became a hazard. So so I don't know if there's some way to move or go around down that side of county farm or what. But but we need, we're going to get, I can tell you right now, we're going to get in a fight back and forth with soccer. So we, we just, I just need clarification and then we'll go duke it out.
Bobby, why don't you get with Renee and see if y'all can come up with a different traffic pattern to where they have to circle in there. I know Renee's scared of that. And she's got plenty of time on her hands. Get with them and then we'll put this back on the agenda in March. We'll see what we want to find out. Y'all good with that?
Yeah, as far as parking. They don't, they don't charge.
The concession, waiver, the parking, and what about the hourly rates?
The hourly rates, Tim sent that to everyone, I believe, the final revised copy. So
Are you going to be able to keep track of that? That seems like a bookkeeping nightmare to me.
I can handle it. Do I want to handle it? No. But can I handle it? Yes. I can.
So that
I mean, pretty much every field is now locked up. You know, it doesn't
So they have to come to you to
They have to, they have to get key, I mean, they can jump fences, don't get me wrong, but, I mean, that does happen. But we don't really have a field left that's not locked at this point.
But you're only charged, not everybody by the hour, right? How does that work?
No, only, only the travel ball teams or non, non-league teams.
Practices, right?
Yeah.
Twenty dollars?
Twenty dollars an hour is what we decided last week.
Okay. So the two open things are concession and the paid parking.
Tim sent that document out, though, to everybody.
I saw it, I just, I didn't get it.
And speaking of, could you, I had to ask you, I think, what's, how much it costs, what the total budget is to run the parks, recreation, including, you know, all your
To, to run like per the facility?
Off the facility.
Yeah, and and that varies based on fields. So it's, it's cheaper for us to run Lasanna. I'm, I'm working on the number for your two, just specifically for you. But you got to think everyone, you got seven at one point.
What's your budget? I mean, what you, I don't have it in front of me.
What's my budget for a field? I don't have, I have a
What is your budget for parks and recreation?
Gosh, I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I don't know off the top of my head.
Be sure that it's been subtracted by tax.
Oh, a positive.
Just like the city.
And is the electricity bill, is the electric
Revenue is nowhere around the cost.
Is the electric, the electric bill separate or is that included in your budget? So include that. I just, I want to know because I want to, you know, that's something that people need to know and really needs to be online.
Yeah, we're working on it. Done. And it's, we're having to go back to the previous year because we have to deal with Zeta's issue.
Yeah, because there, there's some people that think that they should be open anytime, at all times, 24/7 for their use, no matter what. And nobody has any of their fields locked. I mean, everybody has their fields locked. Three Rivers locked, Long Beach is locked.
All of them.
And it's because of vandalism and people not taking care of it. And so I think it's important that we have a time to open and time to close if we do allow it to be open. But the, the record needs to be clear as to why. I mean, I use the example that we all pay taxes, that's true, but you can't go get on a school bus and take a trip around the block if you get ready, right?
I agree.
So or go out to Kessler Air Force Base if you need to.
Million forty, yeah, well.
Thirteen.
I'll fly that roughly by, what, $35,000, $40,000. That'll tell you just what the salaries are.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it online.
That doesn't include the maintenance and the cost and all that sort of thing.
Sure, gas, fuel.
Go ahead, Mr. Trossler.
So we'll take this up at the next board meeting in March.
Correct.
But leagues will be playing ball before then.
Yes, that's what we have to do. We can't take it up in March.
We can call a special meeting if we need to.
No, unconcessions.
Maybe handle it by email? I mean, I don't know.
Unconcessions, ball teams need to know now. On the concession stands for the smaller ones like Wool Market and Socia, they need to know.
Those are the only ones that would be changing.
Yeah.
Because all the other ones around here are
What was the other ones?
So then they either need to get somebody as it stands now with a food permit.
Yep.
That's the way it stands now. They need to know now, just answer.
That's it.
Or they can give us a couple of weeks and we'll try to come up with a waiver.
That's a perfect answer.
Right now, they got to have somebody with a food permit.
Perfect answer, that's all I know.
That's how, and that should not be a problem. We saw the girl at, at Fairgrounds did it.
Well, that's
And this might be an opportunity to work with restaurants, small, mom and pop restaurants that have been suffering from the, you know, the COVID. And this, this, they can reach out to locals that are already in the food business and see if that
Well, we'll, we'll see where that goes. So, and now we know
They've given you an answer at least.
Yeah, I'm good. That's what I need.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one issue that we had talked about over and over. It's offsetting some of the costs that they lost during the
COVID.
COVID and supposedly our contract, but they usually lost, they lost it because of COVID because they would have been closed one way or the other.
Correct.
And is there any
Who is that?
The ball leagues of Socia and Wool Market ball leagues. So my question is, is there a way for us to help offset that cost?
Are we going to help white pillars down there because he lost a lot of money as well during COVID?
Well, I understand that, but these are kids.
White pillars and the white cat.
These are kids that
There's a lot of people been hurt.
But the community, I understand that, but the community, if these volunteers come together for these kids so that they'll have a place to pay. So they, they deserve, you know, some, I believe, some, some help when they need it.
Can we legally do that, Tricia?
That's what I'm asking.
We, the county can to a degree because of the fact that these leagues operate, operate recreational services on behalf of the county because we don't have a league. So so they're providing a public service to those areas of the unincorporated camp, portions of the county that we don't provide the services to. And second, we could do it through advertising county resources.
But on the lease, it would have to be those that are in the unincorporated areas. So Biloxi or Long Beach or none of those leagues would be eligible for this?
You can, you can use your escrow money for any of them as long as you do it through advertising resources.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Bobby, would you relay that to those leagues?
Hang on a minute. What's the interlocal agreement? We don't have an interlocal agreement with the leagues, do we?
No, no. The first part, the first part of the answer The first part of the answer was to address the fact of the operation of leagues on behalf of the county as a public service. So so that that service is a new kind of service that we could assist there. Additionally, you can back it up with advertising county resources with regards to leagues within the cities. So under the, under the interlocals, there are provisions to assist with recreational things.
Services.
Services, whatever, fields, whatever. So so you could assist that way. You could also do that as a backup for the advertising county resources as well.
But they need to make the request in writing and present it to the board.
Well, all of them, all of them, any of them. But it would be, if the, if the cities are doing it, we need the resolution from the city councils since they're going to be in the interlocal. The leagues need to put in writing by their boards.
But take, but keep in mind that the cities are all contracted out to a contractor as well.
That's irrelevant about concessions at this point.
We're talking about
But you're talking about the COVID.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Trossler.
Bobby, would you contact the league?
I think they, if they want something, I think they should contact us. I don't think it should
They need to know how to do it in some cases.
Well, if they ask, you can tell them, they need to put it in writing on their board and make the request.
They asked already, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah, just tell them what the process is.
So you do that.
Thank you.
Do you acknowledge receipt of that?
Pardon?
Acknowledge receipt of that paper?
Right.
Oh, yeah, I need a motion to acknowledge receipt.
What?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven. Order taken off the table, concurring with the resolution by Harrison County Development Commission, authorizing and approving the sale of 24 acres of real property to Ball Game Pool Developments LLC. Do we have a motion to take off the table? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item eight. Order concurring in the resolution of Harrison County Development Commission, authorizing and approving the sale of 24 acres of real property to Ball Game Pool Developments for the purpose of residential or commercial development. Do we have a motion?
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Did we figure out the road issue?
Yes, ma'am. The figured out a lot of issues.
Well, the red one is the one that we asked you to address.
But the lease clearly states that the road is the responsibility, the upkeep and maintenance is the responsibility of the leasing. Here's a copy.
But that was prior to, that was when he was the only person out there, correct?
Well, just get to the good news that the city's willing to take it.
Here's a letter from the city of Gulfport saying that they will accept the road with
We can do it.
Their parameters being met, which is all the zoning and code and all the things that they.
So if we, we have to bring it up to zone and code before they'll take it? Is that what you're saying?
I don't mind coming with that.
The letter says if, if, if the roads can go within the parameters of the city guidelines, which they have to do anyway, they will accept the road.
So what does that mean for us? What are we going to have to do before they'll accept it is what I'm asking.
You don't have to do anything. Jacques has to build the road and follow all the guidelines and put in the fire hydrants and do all the things that he has to do by code to develop the property.
This acceptance deal, you can move the city of Gulfport all the way through to the IMMS facilities of just a acres that, that you've developed for the deal.
The benefit to, to everybody would be to have it go all the way to IMMS.
That's what I'm asking. Gulfport connected to that.
The agreement, all it's, it's not an agreement. It just says that they will, if it's done within the standards, they will approve it, which is not what they said in two thousand seventeen.
Are they gonna maintain it like they did on the other roads you go for?
It says they will maintain it. The rest of that question, I'll let y'all figure out.
And do you have permission from the court to take that property out with a set aside? Because it's my understanding is in what they call a set aside, you need permission from the army court to take it.
This is the document. This is the map. This is our court permit from nineteen ninety-seven. This is the property and it's not in the mitigated permitted area. The hash mark is.
So your answer would be that you don't have anything from the army court?
I don't have to get anything from the army court engineers because it's not in a permitted area. And this is the documented proof as well as a pull-up of not only this property, but the property that Mr. Cage was discussing.
And Bill, one of Dr. Solange's, um, concerns about that the road needs to be widened for safety, who will be doing that?
That's up to, that's up to the developer and the city. Um, currently, the road and its safety and its widening is solely the responsibility of the leasing and the lease. If you elect not to sell this property, then Moby has to widen his own road. And we've given him ample, we've given him in writing that we would do that over and over again at his expense.
At his expense?
At his expense.
I can imagine why he wouldn't take that deal.
Well, no, Beverly, but that's what was in the lease, but this is the.
I know, but this changes that.
Yeah. But remember, if we sell this, we get two hundred and seventy thousand dollars immediately in taxes from the developer into our coffers, which would more than cover the road. If you feel more comfortable, Connie, us taking the road instead of trusting Gulfport to maintain it, we can take it and widen it. It'd be paid off in the first year, which is the taxes we're getting.
I'd like Jacques to talk to y'all. Let me just preface what's about to happen with this. Today, you're deciding whether or not you want to sell this piece of property to Jacques. Everything he's about to tell you is another step. It's not today. And it shouldn't be in lockstep with what he's about to tell you. So.
But we already talked to him last week and I think we have a good understanding. I, the problem is, is we're not real sure what he's gonna do on the property, not that it matters. But that was one of the issues. But the other main one was we don't want this to negatively impact IMMS. So he's speaking for myself.
Nobody does.
That's why I asked the question.
Yes.
Again, I didn't get an answer. The city of Gulfport has agreed to take their road from the developer if he builds it to specifications that is satisfactory to the city of Gulfport.
Right.
But that's what they're saying. But they're only talking about the area that the developer will develop. That leaves IMMS out as far, or still his responsibility, I assume, from where the developer's property will end if we sell it to IMMS or, or is it right next to IMMS? I'm just, that's my concern too. I don't want him to be stuck out there.
Me either.
Uh, with.
Can you negotiate that as part of the deal?
So we need, the road is a crux because.
So, so here's, here's an answer. Here's an answer to that. You decide today to sell the land and you say the road has to go to Moby, even though it crosses Jacques' property line. And you accept the road, which takes the responsibility off of Moby for the maintenance. Then Jacques, if you let him answer the questions, um, has a plan to make that road the widest road, the nicest road. And, but it's not part of.
We have no doubt. The question is, Bill, can you negotiate and put that in writing that the developer will do the road all the way to IMMS and not just there?
So.
And it's.
No, that, that, that is not something you can ask a developer to do.
Okay, well, that's what I'm asking. Can you do that?
We can expect, and I hope he would, for his own benefit, build a good road to access what he develops. But you can't ask a developer to extend beyond his development to build a road.
Okay.
That's why the issue before the city of Gulfport or Harrison County will take the road and therefore that assures all the occupants on that road, including IMMS, that they'll have a road to their facility, a decent road to their facility.
And I hope Moby doesn't mind me.
You can't ask that developer to extend beyond his development to build a road for someone else.
Could we do that? An answer to that's no. So thank you.
Connie pointed out that it's not a secret that Gulfport does not, sorry, Bill, does not have the best relationship with, with them. They've had a lot of problems with them. They would put up signs on the beach that, you know. So I think it would be best if the county just take it.
I agree.
But the answer's not no. Let me clarify that. The answer's not no. The answer comes in a TIF. Similar to what y'all approved on County Road for St. Saint.
Excuse me, but Mr. Lander just, my question was, can you require the developer to do that? And Mr. Marlin just said, no, we cannot. So the answer's no.
I don't know.
Which is fine.
I don't think it would be fair.
If you do a TIF.
Leonard, I'm curious about the TIF.
If you do a TIF and you include Moby, this is an opportunity for everybody to work together, okay? You do a TIF with the city of Gulfport and with the county.
Turn that one down.
Separate transaction from this sale, like I said a few minutes ago. The TIF and the improvements will pay for the road. In that TIF, it can go all the way to Moby's front door. And it can go to the developer's door.
Or we can not do the TIF and just do the road from where he ends, where he stops and go to Moby. So we actually, as opposed to a five-year fifty percent TIF, we could just widen the road from where he leaves off and make it TIF.
If we accept the road, the county.
If we accept the road, yes. Would it be cheaper than a five-year fifty percent TIF, I'm just guessing?
Because if, if, if the Zoll Press Committee, if I understand correctly, to do the road, to build the road, three-lane turn lanes and all that, that's at his expense. Uh, but he's not gonna go beyond his own property that will service his development.
Well, that's where.
And if the county takes the road, we'll accept that once the developer, once the developer builds the road out like he wants. And if it's built to county specifications, then we accept that part as well as the road all the way to IMMS. Then it'll be incumbent upon the county to develop the road beyond the developer to IMMS.
Okay.
All right. What's the board's pleasure?
Did I miss it?
Nope.
So we have a motion, a second to concur in the resolution.
Now, I was kind of questioning.
Just specifications included, make sure there's.
I think, Bill, you did put it in the contract in reference to no housing. Or there will be in the contract. Because I believe that we shouldn't be selling development property to build homes.
Yes, no single-family residences, but similar to what's on County Lorraine. If there's a commercial property downstairs and a residence upstairs, that would be an amendment that we would make to the contract.
And I'm not sure, but I would like to clarify, and I don't know if the assessor or somebody here, the assessors, will clarify. Can you claim homestead exemption on top of a commercial building?
Beyond that, I guess. Beyond the building that live above it.
I guess you could. I don't know.
I think you can on Lorraine Road and Jacques other, that all-state family that lives above their all-state building, do they pay? Is that their homestead?
No, it's not their primary residence.
Oh.
That wouldn't be, then you can't.
I would like to.
I guess, can you claim a primary residence above a commercial property? I don't know. That's why I would like the assessor to.
If you're technically a condominium and they just had that unit, they, they could. But typically, they're not owning the other units in the.
Yeah, if, if there's multi-units, you know. One, one individual couldn't claim homestead exemption just because they own all the multiple units that the other residents in there.
Hmm, I don't know.
No, you can't, you can't, you can't claim rental property, homestead exemption.
No, it's neither one of them.
But if there's only, the question was, that you're asking was a legitimate question. If, if I own a big business and on top of that business I have a residence, can I claim that part of the residence? Can I claim that homestead exemption?
If it was sold as a condominium.
If it's my primary residence, I assume that I could. And that's not what I want necessarily approved. I, I don't think development property should be used for that.
But isn't it more money that we get for property taxes?
Yeah.
And if somebody.
Yeah.
Downtown Gulfport doesn't.
I don't have a really a problem. What I don't want is single-family homes being used.
Right.
We eat the development property being sold to develop single-family homes.
Well, it says in here for the purpose of residential or commercial.
That's what needs to be clarified. And I ask you to clarify.
Not single-family residences, but, but allow for the odd chance that somebody might want to live above their commercial space.
Yeah.
We got to clarify that.
I don't see it.
Right.
That's.
Mr. Jacques, you got anything you'd like to say?
Let me ask one other question too, if I may, in reference to sell that property. I want to clear. And I think you addressed that a few minutes ago, but I want to make sure. There's no encumbrance on those wetlands, those thirteen plus and minus acres on the, on the wetlands of the twenty-four acre properties. No encumbrance at all that could come back to us, us being the development commission and ultimately Harrison County.
On the map.
Any encumbrances on there, that's what costs us any money.
On the map, there is a spot that's point seven-one acres that's addressed in this email that is encumbered, that could. If, so the way this works and it's explained in that email, today it's sale. Tomorrow, if Jacques decides, hey, I'm, I'm gonna develop five of those wetlands acres, we go file a permit with the court, we, the development commission, we charge him for those credits, not at cost, above our cost. And we apply to mitigate that space, just like we did for Moby, just like we did on the FedEx property, which is why.
The difference with Moby is that was a lease. Now you're talking about selling. It sounds to me like you guys owe some more homework to pay.
No, Bill, let me clarify what you said. The encumbrance would be on the developer, not on the commission.
Correct.
And that if he has to mitigate those wetlands, he's gonna have to mitigate them. And the development commission already has those, if I understand correctly, mitigated. So he's gonna have to mitigate them from you or go to you and get it mitigated.
Or, yes, everything you said is a hundred percent correct. The only other variable of that is he can go on his own and file his own court.
But probably it would cost him more.
Correct. So if he decides to mitigate and if he decides to engage us to do that, five of those acres, it's, it's like ten or eleven wetlands credits. He will do an amendment with us to pay us a hundred thousand dollars for those credits. That's a separate agreement. That's a separate transaction. The application is turned in to the court. Takes six months to a year to get an answer. There's no guarantee. He doesn't write the check until the permit's issued. He writes the check to us. We write the check to the court out of our wetlands bank. He gets a five-year permit for wetlands to develop the mitigated portion.
Why don't we just keep it though?
No, you're.
They're so complicated.
It doesn't do us, it doesn't work like that. It doesn't work like that. It, it's, it's the most complicated, messed up system.
That's why it's easy for us just, we already mitigate it. Let's just keep it and move on with it and, and clean it up. We have, you get with the road department or someone and ask them and pay the road department to fix it. Clean.
Take the car.
It's a different twenty-four.
Different option. It's probably a wreck too, though.
Probably. So what's the board's pleasure?
I think Supervisor Rocco, you wanted to hear from Jacques before we leave.
I asked.
Oh, come, come on up. But she said she wanted to. I'd like to hear from the developer. He said we could hear from him, so I'd like to report.
Wasn't prepared to say the good day, so there's any questions.
You shaved. I see that. What, what are your plans?
It was a football loss type deal, so.
I think you just said that we could hear from the developer and he could talk to us about what he, his plans are. Is that correct? Didn't you just say it before this started? Okay. Okay, Jacques.
Well, I don't know if I'm gonna say anything different than last week, except our plans are to build a road. And the properties do abut each other. So, as a developer, I don't have a problem building the road all the way down. It's about twenty-seven hundred feet, which will end at Moby's property. And if he wants to pick it up from there on his property, that's all he would have to do. I mean, I'm gonna come all the way down to his parking lot. But we're gonna do it in phases. Phase one will be a corner, uh, and then phase two will go down to his property. But we can put a timeline on when it needs to be built. Typically, if I was gonna build that road and turn it over, dedicate to the city of Gulfport, I have one year. So, you know, I don't have a, I don't have a problem.
City or county?
So the county probably put the same stipulation. I don't have an issue with that. Uh, my thoughts were, and you're probably gonna have something very similar to this from the city of Gulfport come before you, just in the next month, they were trying to create a TIF zone, um, south of Bayou Bonord. I mean, with, with the county, uh, since I own property there, if you sell it, choose to sell it and you own property there, the county could actually do a TIF. So the developer doesn't always have to own the TIF. When those laws were created in nineteen seventy-two, it was really for municipalities. But if the county owns a TIF, you would actually get the county tax dollars plus the property tax that the city would normally get.
No, 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 no. No, no, that requires special, that's, that's some special legislation that would do that.
But they're coming to you shortly to ask the same thing.
That, that could happen. Don't misunderstand me, but we do not get, we do not get sales tax when we do a TIF. Only they have a loan tax.
Absolutely, but you'll get the city have a loan tax and the county have a loan tax.
We always get that.
No, no, we, we get county abhorment and the city gets just abhorment.
Just that the cities are.
We'll wait till they propose their thing south of Bayou Bonord because that's what they're looking at. They're thinking, hey, we're gonna keep these roads. We're gonna ask county if they'll participate fifty percent and we'll get the county tax off.
That's the normal TIF thing that we do. That's the normal TIF.
Absolutely, but, but not typically when the municipality is owning it. That's when the developer owns it. When the developer owns it, we come to the county and you approve it. Then we go to the city and they approve it.
Cause you own it, which you don't own, the county owns it.
That's what you're saying.
Well, I can't. Something in between here?
Because of conflicts with the city, I can't own the city part of the TIF. That's why I have one with you that was approved back in November of twenty seventeen. So I can't own that side.
Right.
So, you know, my thoughts were, you get twice as much money if you guys own it. But I'd have to come talk to you.
No, that's not wrong. Our county administrators is gonna.
They're all saying. Can't do that.
You can't do that.
Well, it's not true because you guys really have never administered a TIF. Mine's the very first one. Cause typically the municipality, the city, or if the city blocks or city Gulfport administers the TIF. Mine was actually the first one on record that's only through the county. But the county can own the TIF, just like the city of Gulfport. You create a TIF zone and put in multiple pieces of property so that all the tax dollars that come in in that area stay in that area and are used in that area.
The only way we could benefit, if I understand correctly, with the TIF that he's describing, is if we, we're, we create the TIF and it's in the county and we go to the city and ask the city to participate, like they do up, ask the city to participate in dedicating part of their taxes to pay the TIF off, then we would get the benefit of it. Generally, the TIF bonds that we participate in is in the city. The cities request us to participate in the TIF and what we do as a rule, and we've done this just recently, we dedicate fifty percent of our county taxes to defer to the bond, the debt service on the bond.
Sometimes it's.
The city, it, you know, so the, I think that's what Jacques.
Yes, and, and there's one that yet coming up right now. It's gonna come to.
City taxes.
So the city wants us to do.
Vice versa. We just simply contribute a portion of those taxes for the bond.
Don't.
Well, I'm just, I'm just laying one on the table so when they come to you and ask for your tax money, you can say, hey, would you do the same thing for us?
Right.
So you're, I'm just gonna lay it on the table. You know, you'll have that opportunity.
Property that you're fixing to buy is in the city of Gulfport. It's the city of Gulfport owns, that's in, within the corporate limits of the city of Gulfport. So when you develop that, you're gonna have to deal with the city if you want a TIF bond.
Absolutely.
Now, the city can come to us if they wanted to and ask us to contribute to that part of our, uh, taxes on it.
I don't think Mr. Jacques can do that because he's.
Yeah, so I, I only don't.
So he would only, his only recourse would be to come to the county.
Because of conflict event.
Now, after April, he might.
Yeah, that, I understand that, but I'm talking about as a, what he says, general rule, that's the way it would work. But there is some potential conflict eventually going on that the city can't do it, cannot.
Well, the board expressed.
Assume the whole hundred percent of our taxes on that property would have to be dedicated to defer the bond that he would use. If we participated with him in a TIF, it would be one hundred percent of our taxes going to the, within the TIF. Or six percent, it depends on, but you could request a hundred percent, but we, we probably wouldn't do it.
I did last time and you said you've never done it.
Never done it and probably will not.
Never ask again.
He can ask.
Just, you know, some of the board expressed keeping the road and the county keeping the road. And I'm saying if you're gonna keep it, you may as well have Gulfport give you a hundred thousand dollars.
That's, that's, that is a separate issue from the fact of the sale, the just case to sell the property and on the road.
Which is a separate transaction, a separate discussion.
That's, that's all that, all that stuff. But I am, I will express the same concerns that Supervisor Powers expressed about Gulfport's relationship with IMMS and to make sure that they don't get short change in the deal.
Well, that's why I got the letter from the city attorney that we weren't able to get in two thousand seventeen.
And if the city's willing to do it, but we decide we'd rather do it, I spoke to him over the other day. He's happy as long as his road is widened and his access is not impeded.
Well, actually, I'd like to hear, since we.
Let you.
Thanks to Ms. Rocco.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna let Mr. Rocco speak, make this thing fair. Make this be fair.
Well, thank you so much. I won't keep you too long. As I listen.
As I listen, from all you folks that understand, this is a complicated deal. It does have encumbrances by the GORF engineers, I went through that. One of the reasons we were approved by the Corps and expedited was because it was a nonprofit. It served the purpose of the Corps, which was education, conservation, it was federal money, and it was a lease. Everything that I have, the $50 million that I have, belongs to the county. If I go away, the leasehold development on it belongs to the county, that's a big deal. Everybody says Moby got it free, it didn't. It is encumbered by the federal government. If something happens to me, the federal government takes over that facility, it's theirs. And after that, it's yours. So there's a benefit to preserving it. We're not against any prudent development. We want our road to be expanded, it was a dirt road, it is a county road. If you look at the document, in the lease, it says that dirt road was managed by us in 2005. But once the county paved it and widened it, it became theirs, and there is documentation. There's also, like I said, quite a bit of that property has been set aside. It would require the GORF engineer's permission. It required us to do it, and if we didn't, we didn't have that lease. So, but once you sell it, it's a different story. There's lots of complications, there are other developments that are going to be included in it. And like has been said, we just want a safe road. We're getting 120,000-plus people. We're getting large school buses coming through there, and we want unimpeded access. I don't know what happens once you sell it and it's out. We've tried the City of Gulfport to help us with the road, they denied us, so...
They'll give you a sign, will they? They'll give you a sign.
Yep, they've taken off, they had a sign, they've taken them off.
Exactly. I would never blame you.
It sounds like you're saying it's already a county road once we paved it anyway.
That's correct.
All right, take your memory.
And so I really appreciate it.
Yeah.
We...
And you also said that the, that wetlands are already encumbered by what?
It is set aside, yes.
Set aside.
35 acres that Bill is referring to.
It's .7 acres.
.7, not even one acre.
The complications that Dr. Long gives referring to, I wanna make sure those complications are not on us.
That's what I'm concerned about.
If the complication is on the developer, that's his problem. As long as it's not on us, I don't have a problem with it. That's why I kept asking him, since he represents the development commission, that if there's any problems, if there, are there any encumbrances that could fall back on the development commission and ultimately Harrison County? That's what I want to avoid. If the complications that Dr. Long is referring to falls on the developer, on the person that we sell, or the company or developer that we sell the land to, if that's his complication, that's what he's assuming. And I don't have a problem with it.
Now, I know Bill doesn't want to, because he doesn't have to get permission or a letter or anything from the Army Corps, but why can't we get one that assures us of just what you're saying?
You have a map.
Yeah, that's what he gave us.
You have a map and an email.
That's an email.
That's an email from the guy that did the permit and did the promoting. It's from Barry Vitor, who did the promoting for Moby.
And he went to Army Corps?
No, he's a private consultant. The Army Corps is not gonna weigh in on a private matter. And it's gonna take a year for that to happen.
This is .7, this isn't even an acre.
Yeah. And in the lease...
I'm never getting off track.
In the lease, this whole contention point that Moby keeps saying that once the county approved his road, it became the county's road is false. It's on page three of the lease. It says, it says, you gotta hang on, because it's long.
Read the whole thing.
Okay, let me start on the beginning. The lessor is HCDC, the lesee is Moby, okay? Access to property, lessor...
This is 2005, March 2005, before the hurricane. Let's make sure everybody understands, we talked about a dirt road and...
It doesn't matter, Moby, it doesn't matter.
It does.
Okay, okay.
Lesser hereby...
This doesn't, I'm sorry, I don't think we can figure this. We think the county should have it anyway, we don't want the city to do it. But you'll be happy with the access, if you wanna sell it, let's move forward, please.
So call, can you call the question?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the sale...
We already have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, no, motion carries.
I'm not sure what the vote was, concurring...
Concurring in the resolution, here's the...
No, no, I know what the vote was, I, individual votes, I didn't...
Ms. Rocker and Mr. Martin voted no.
We voted nay. Connie and myself.
32?
Yeah.
Vote 32. But it passed. Number...
Nine.
Consent agenda. Agenda items numbered nine through 15 have been placed on a consent agenda, same appearing to be routine, non-controversial letters on which all supervisors will agree. Do we have a motion to agree?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Number 16. Order acknowledging receipt of check number 1501 in the amount of $30,652 from Connie Latner for repayment of loan for payroll purposes and...
Question.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion, I'm sorry, what is this for? This is just for reimbursement for after...
We loaned her some money, if I understand correctly. We loaned her money to take care of her payroll, now she's paying it back.
So the grant funds backed up, okay. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 17. Order approving purchase of any S6110 reporting standards standalone EMS upgrade for voting machines. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 18. Order approving final plan of the hive on subdivision phase three located Supervisors voting District 1. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify...
That's not connected.
Just...
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 19. Order approving the 2021 emergency management performance application and work plan application as recommended by Matt Stratton, Director EMA and authorizing Board President to execute on this series documents, grant reimbursees local government up to 50% of eligible EMA expenses. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, I have, so it only pays back 50%? There's that. We don't have to match this in any way, where they're just gonna reimburse us up to half?
Yes, ma'am, that's right. It is capped at a certain amount based on our county population, you can't go above that.
Okay, cool. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 20. Order approving travel for emergency management director Matt Stratton. Any supervisor county engineer, GIS director, and Harris County Road Manager to attend the 2021 National Hurricane Conference in New Orleans. They're assuming they have it. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 21. Order approving lot item transfer from O-01164603 to O-01164919 in the amount of $650 for the purchase, purchasing a couch and table for Judge Dickinson's chambers. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, what's the transfer, what do we count? I'm not sure.
It's a, all the supplies, it's 603, and it's going into a capital furniture.
It's out of his budget and taking...
That's it, yes.
And putting it into a capital.
Correct.
Of town, okay.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 22, Road Department order approving adding new position of equipment operator 3, Orange Grove Work Center. Money's within the budget and eliminating the operator 2 position. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item 23. Order indicating overturning the Road Department per tax list. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Timmy, is there anything else you needed, while we're on the Road Department?
I would just like to give an update on this morning.
Okay.
District 2, about 12:15 Sunday morning, had burglary. Got into the barn, the shop area, got the keys hanging up, stole a pickup truck and a closed-end trailer. So we called the Sheriff's Department, they come and did it. We have a faulty GPS system, is what we have. And the amount of money we spent doing this, so tracked it to Amanda Lane, which is off of Socializan River. Had the Sheriff's Department meet me up there, gave the address of the house. Truck is nowhere to be found. Well, further investigating to the GPS, the last peen on that truck was Amanda Road on December 26th.
Oh, Lord.
Oh.
Yes. So we reach out to call the company, fleet complete, they're in Canada. No answer. We have a truck at Lawrence right now with a trailer, we don't tell where it can be, we can't track it.
Is it a Canadian company? I don't like hearing that.
So, and I have another issue is, you know, I knew it was coming here, so I'm leaving the site out there. I'm needing to pull video data right then where I can bring, get to the sheriff, they can start investigating further into it.
Quicker than that.
Yes, sir. Called the IT, the IT says, well, I can't, I gotta get approval.
Well, we can give him approval right now, that if this is an emergency.
The point he's trying to make is that the quicker the better, the sheriff department would have had that information quicker. But we were delayed through some kind of bureaucratic issue with us.
You need to adjust that on emergencies, I took a watch like that.
I think you can change it to where we're asking for that video. You don't have to go through anybody.
Sheriff's Department, why do we object to the sheriff asking for it?
So Pam, you'll get with the IT department, I don't know that...
The sheriff's department. Because we have a department, the Sheriff's Department asking something, they need to do it quicker.
We're trying to work this, it's time to be there. We already behind the gun, almost a day. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 24. Order concurring with the Planning Commission's decision to approve case file O-612HC438. Mr. Pat Bonk, come on, sorry.
We have a lot of cases today. Adams 24 through 31 are regular cases before the Planning Commission. There was one staff-generated text amendment changing one line of the determining ordinance. Everything is more...
I would take out number 30, please. Vote on that separately, if you don't mind.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I make a motion excluding the ones that Pat has had, excluding number 30.
Do we have a second?
So, like I said...
Second.
Just want clarification on this particular one, in which granted a six, I think it's number 24, six months extension. If I understand that correctly, what the commission has indicated to these applicants is that this is the last go-round for them. You get, do whatever they need to do, because you're not gonna, they're not going to approve an extension.
And they did the same thing last six months, but they came in with a story that...
They came in and they did what they said it wasn't gonna do.
Yes, sir.
So they'll do it again in six more months.
We have a motion, any...
I think there should be a limit on these extensions for temporary, but anyway, they said this is their last one.
Sometimes they're there 15 years.
Yeah, something, yeah.
And then they're rentals.
Do we have a motion and a second to concur with the zoning and the Planning Commission's decision with the exception of item 31? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Now we'll go to item 31. Order concurring with the Planning Commission's decision to approve case file 2101HC009 or text amendment request of our Patrick Bonk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, number five. Number 30? Sorry, 31, I'm sorry, number 31, I was looking at District 5, sorry. Tell me about that, Pat, because that's one acre, number one, or two, that road is extremely narrow and extremely busy. And most of the homes in that area are homes, they are not mobile homes, so you're changing the character of the neighborhood.
Which one are you talking about?
Talking about the third or the one, the third.
I can't, I'm not sure what's going on.
She's talking about 30. They're saying 31, she's talking about 30.
Yeah, 31 deals with reducing the rideaway south. Okay, so it's 30.
30.
All right, Miss Rocker, once we get on the right tone, we'll do the same thing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Number 30.
I thought we excluded 31.
We exclude 30.
She said, Tom said 30.
I meant 30, okay. Correct the minutes on that, on Little Market Road.
It is ZR1 currently, which does not allow manufactured homes. But in the past, there was a manufactured home on this side of the lot. It's been gone, if I remember, since 2015, and the family's having hard times and she wants to move back. Neighbors to this property were at a hearing, but they did not object, so they just wanted to see what was going on.
Okay, well...
They did not enter anything to the record, they didn't speak in the committee meeting, we specifically asked them.
The reason that you do not change zoning is because it changes the character of the neighborhood. If the character of the neighborhood is mostly housing, I don't know if there's any mobile homes on Little Market Road.
There's some behind it, there's a little private traffic, it's...
I've never seen them. Just, why did y'all do it, is the question? So, for that matter... Well, it was, but how long has it been?
It's been a while.
But how mu, how long? Do you know? How long has it been?
It was since 2015.
So 15, 16, 17, that's 20, six years it has not had any mobile homes on it. And development has been rapid on that air, in that area, building homes. So I don't understand the zoning board's decision. The Planning Commission's changing the zoning for us, so therefore I'd ask that we do not concur with the...
So a motion to deny, that's interesting.
I would like to add, maybe a legal thing. Our decision not to concur, does that require any kind of a procedural process in which they would have an appeal?
At this point, they would have to appeal to court.
If we deny it, it would go directly to Circuit Court.
Yes, sir.
So we have a motion to deny as opposed to not concur, right?
Well, effectively, if we don't concur, we're denying.
Well, I don't know, because last time that happened, it went back to the Planning Commission.
No, we remanded it back to the Planning Commission.
No, we did.
You could either remand or you could table to allow them to appear, to present their side.
No, I think I'm hearing a motion to deny, Ms. Rocker.
Right.
But what were you saying?
If you wanted to hear from the homeowner, you could table, but it sounds as though the will of the board is to deny so their right would be to appeal.
So did somebody second the motion to deny?
I seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries to deny. Okay, did we vote on 31?
Yes, you did. No, you removed it from the last time.
I'm sorry.
On 31.
We included 31 in your legal motion.
Yeah, can I rescind that motion and correct it as number 30?
She's got it.
I think she said 30.
I said 30, okay.
Item 32. Order spreading upon amendments personnel changes of the sheriff's office as listed nonfiled with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item 33. Order concurring with the county administrator unemployment as listed nonfiled with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty four, order concurring with the road manager unemployment as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty five, consider accepting the one and only bid received on January twenty eighth from H Barber &amp; Sons an amount of fifty six thousand dollars for one big beach cleaner to be used by the Harrison County Sand Beach Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Discussion. I just wonder if we had a regular bid process, paper bid process, whether we'd have got more bids.
Probably.
Does Robert, I mean, uh.
Jody, no. Can we, uh, ask Jody to start attending our meetings?
He's eating.
We've got more and more questions.
I'm just curious, I don't know if the bid is way out of, you know, in reference to the caller, I'm just curious. There's some, you know, the legislature's trying to.
Is this about the third question that we've had? Yeah, these bids. Then there was another one with the fire truck.
Some people absolutely just will not, vendors will not bid on that.
Jody, is, did you do this bid electronically? For the sand beach fifty six thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you feel like you would have gotten more bids had you not done it electronically?
So, so there's only two manufacturers that we know of, and that's their sand beach. That makes this kind of equipment, we reached out to both manufacturers. And much like the last time we did this, the one bid came in and Chuck had a good feel for what the value of the machine was at, and it came in lower than he had anticipated.
In your opinion, do you think they were doing a regular bidding process, paper, like, yes, I call it paper bid? Do you think both, both would have participated in the bid, both manufacturers?
It could be, it could be, yes, ma'am.
All right, I mean.
But Chuck feels like this is.
Yeah, I don't think the bid's way out.
And I don't see where this is being paid out of, payable from what counts.
They come to a sand beach.
He had that in budget.
And if I may, Ms. Brown, uh, in the bidding process, are you making sure that you document all of the issues that we have with it so that the legislature has a leg to stand on if they want to, uh, relax some of those, um, restrictions?
Still documenting that, yes, ma'am, completely, we've already sent the N A S and we're just adding to it as it comes up. Yes, ma'am.
In the world, they won't give us a choice, and I mean, that's a choice beyond my comprehension.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty six, consider accepting the little bid received on January twenty eighth from Empire Truck Sales in the amount of a hundred and six thousand dollars for tandem axle dump body truck for use by the Sand Beach Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Discussion. So you got more than one bid this week?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and is this within, you know, we talked before about service, you know, that we didn't want to buy things, you'd have to drive, uh, to Meridian to get serviced. Is, is Empire local?
Empire is here, it's here on the coast.
Not all the specs.
Not all the specs, yes.
And Chuck is agreeable to this as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty seven, order spreading upon amendments a list of emergency left loads and state contract orders issued by the purchasing department from January. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty eight, recognize the sheriff as an important line number of persons currently lost in Harrison County facilities.
Total, we have six eighty one, uh, forty five misdemeanor, hundred and two females, thirty five that cleared state arrest, and thirty nine federal inmate. I've got two more names, but I'll just bring them up to the end, so you know.
The sheriff has a couple of attendings, I'm sorry.
One is a fingerprint scanner that's at the end of life. Uh, this is, this purchase, you may want to ask Jody if you can back in here.
Renee, will you go get Jody again?
But this is a fingerprint, uh, machine that's in a booking that it's at the end of life, um, support system don't work anymore, we can't get anybody to work on it. And we have to purchase a new one. The, uh, we put out an R F Q, kind of a fingerprint machine, Jody. Put on R F Q to, to purchase it. And we want to go with the highest one. And there's several reasons why, that's because they, the other machine does not adapt to the state. This machine adapts to the state, Biloxi and Gupport. So if Gupports arrests somebody, just example, they fingerprint them on their machine, it shoots to our machine. It's one less thing we got to do, and then it shoots to the state. So it's, the other machine that's in question doesn't do any of that.
But that wasn't included in the specs?
Yeah, it was included in the specs.
It was, but you can get lowest and best, so in your opinion, this is your best.
This is the best. The other thing, the other issue with it is, is that the, um, this comes out of a, of a, out of an IT grant. So it's not, it's not any money coming out of our pocket, but it, it adapts to everything that the state requires. It adapts to what Katie's law is, to where you have to send DNA of it, those fingerprints, this machine has everything, so the.
Well, what I'm trying to tell you is go with a higher price machine.
Because it does.
Because it does everything you need to do.
But the second bid and the lower bid does not meet specifications because the specifications ask that it do what you're saying, it do what the state.
Well, I don't know if the specs were in there to that level.
So, so in, in, uh, working with the department on that, I didn't hear anything about that one machine that was higher, was the only machine that would be able to communicate with the departments? Um, I wouldn't wear that.
Yeah, that's the only one, I mean, we, we did, uh, we went to Jackson County, Purover County. Jackson County has the system that is on state bid to lower, the lower system. And they do not recommend it. Purover County uses it, uh, Horace County uses it, state uses it. It, it's almost, to me, it's almost a sole source bid because it's the only one that would do everything you needed to do.
But the specs, just, I guess, Troy, what I'm saying is, we're fixing to approve a higher bid, but the lower bid meets the actual written specifications that we put out, maybe we need to.
No, no, the, the lower bid does not meet any of the specifications required by the state.
We, we didn't, we didn't publish anything on that.
Why not?
What?
Why not?
Wait, you didn't do it, when, you didn't advertise for R F Qs or R bids?
So you, so you just got two quotes, gave to you and you.
We got two quotes and, and I was communicating with the department.
How much?
It all started.
Fourteen thousand.
Oh, it was in the quote, okay, I thought we were, I thought we were accepting a bid, that's a quote.
But the two quotes that you received are not apples to apples, is what you're saying?
No, the two, it's like buying a Mercedes and a.
Well, in a quote, we should have, it's not an acceptance or a recommendation.
Yeah, there's no comparison to the machines, but you have to understand what the machines do, the machines, the, the A D S, the lowest cost of machine, they don't even have an add-on that can put this on it, nothing.
That's fourteen thousand dollars.
Nothing, there's nothing you can buy software wise to say, I want this to talk to the state of Mississippi, and it will not do it.
All right, what he's saying is, the quote, it's one of them that meet what he wants, and it's just quotes, can we go with the higher quote?
Let me, let me say this, it's not what Troy wants, it's what the state requires.
Right.
Well, that too. So we can go with the higher.
And that too, yeah.
So I answered that, Tricia, can we go with that quote?
Yes, because, because that is the only quote that gives the parameter.
That makes sense, parameter.
Gotcha, okay, so we make a motion to approve the purchase of the fingerprint machine as the sheriff recommends.
I D E M I A system.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
All right.
I would just like to say that as long as it's justified in the order of I would go with a higher quote, I believe that state statute requires justification, and you're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about a bid, and that's what I've been.
Ladies and gentlemen. Sheriff.
All righty then.
Uh, one more. This is a sole cer, sole, uh, sole, sole source purchase of twenty new body cameras. Uh, to cover all of transport, it's the only thing that we've never had covered.
Got a sole source.
You got a sole source left?
Yeah, everything's in there.
Got a sole source, tell me.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
I'm saying, come to where you.
The I D, what was the, the amount?
Brittany has it.
Fourteen thousand, okay, because we only got anything, well, where's it gonna be paid from?
Does it require budget amount?
Uh, it's gonna be paid out of, no, it's gonna be paid out of an IT grant. I don't know the number.
Okay.
Yes, it's an IT grant that we're paying for it out of.
Does it need to be part of the budget?
Huh? General fund. Is the grant?
The grant, they got a grant from Allen for IT technologies for any thousand dollars last year, and that was put into the general fund specifically for public safety sheriff department IT.
But it's not, it was put into the general fund, but it was not put into a certain account.
It was put into a revenue, a grant revenue account.
All right, without more? All right, item thirty nine. Order acknowledging receipt of the monthly inmate meal law from the Harrison County Adult Attention Center for the month of January twenty twenty one as en filed with county administrator. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty.
Can we go back to the sole source one too?
I'm sorry.
Where is that gonna be paid out of, and how much is it?
Sheriff, is that the second sole source? I hate it, Brittany.
It's forty three, eight hundred. Count number zero two nine, two fifteen, nine twenty one.
Item forty, order approving payment of claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty one, order approving the separate board agreement between the City of Gulfport and Harrison County pertaining to the Edley Firm Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Programs. And authorizing the board president to execute this name. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Sorry, I wasn't listening.
For a J grant?
That just goes through the city of Gulfport, right, Troy, they, they managing a grant for, just like the housing thing we're gonna be dealing with in a few minutes.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty two was a mistake, we've already done that, it was the inmate meal law we did on thirty nine, apologize for not catching that. Item forty three, order approving pay application number eleven from Dixon Contracting Company for the H G A D C jail upgrades and repairs in the amount of three hundred forty three thousand, seven hundred ninety five dollars and eighty nine cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion, sorry, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty four, order authorizing the Chancellor of Clerk to issue a check for ninety eight hundred dollars to Robert Trace Narcotics Division for the Gulfport Office of Homeland Security Investigations. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty five, order authorizing board president to execute Mississippi Wireless Communication Commission procurement request for twenty new radios as approved February one, twenty twenty one. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty six, order correcting the scrubbers error in the order adopted October twelve, twenty twenty, file number two zero one eight five zero, correcting and changing the line item number from zero three zero two two one six one three to line item number zero three zero two eight one six one three. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty seven, order correcting another scrubbers error in the order adopted October twelve, we can have a good one. Twenty twenty and number twenty eighteen forty eight.
One number.
Correcting and changing the line item from number oh three oh two two one six one three to line item oh three oh two eight one six one three. Do we have a motion?
Motion, sorry.
Discussion, love is doing all that scrubbing, you need to be a little careful.
Scrubbing, scrubbing.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty eight, order authorizing the inter fund line of repayments as approved attached to the tour. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty nine, order approving payment of the following claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, order acknowledging receipt of five hundred thirty four thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and eighty two cents representing funds settled to Harrison County Journal Fund on December ninth, twenty twenty, and twenty thousand two sixty seventy eight representing funds settled to Harrison County Journal Fund, January twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Do we have a motion to accept these payments?
Motion.
So, discussion, that's just, is that just bringing the books up to date, change older tiers than you assess up, collecting?
No, these were actually five accounts, actually eleven accounts, five of them were bank court style, five were Cooper's Bank, one was community bank. And, um, John had asked the bookkeeper, previous bookkeeper with LaRosa's office to come in and do an audit. And she can't come for health reasons. So I think he's talked to the auditors, and they're gonna come in and do an audit, what, Labor Day, is that what he said? Do you know? They were looking to remain about.
So they're gonna do the audit.
The state, the state auditors.
Can, can we request as a board to have that whole office audited?
That's what they're doing.
That's those accounts, that's what.
Those accounts are, I'm talking about the whole office, since the, the whole, whole office of four.
Sheriff, can I ask that?
To do an audit of that particular office and to go and dip with all of those cash accounts, that would probably be considered a special engagement that would cost more outside of the scope of the regular annual audit that we already have contracted. Um, they do, as part of their audit procedures, look at the annual transactions and make sure that they don't exceed, um, the hundred ten percent rule as far as out of alarm assessments and collections. But to go into depth on those cash accounts would probably, most likely, be a special engagement. And I understand some of those cash accounts go back decades.
Twenty years, I think, twenty years.
Yeah.
But it's a half a million dollars that we don't know anything about, where it came from.
Well, we know that twenty five hundred of it is identified as Kim Pham's tax return, and three hundred and twenty nine thousand was overpayment by Riverboat Casino Golden Nugget.
And they're leaving twenty thousand dollars in the open account for, um, uncashed refund checks. So if anybody comes in and makes a claim, that twenty thousand dollars would be.
Will cover that.
Right.
Those claims.
So there's really only two hundred and sixteen thousand and some change that's unidentified.
Correct.
So we can pay these people back that paid too much.
So on the next order, that's paying the Riverboat and Kim Pham thing.
So let's vote on this one.
That's a nice little surprise. For a golden nugget.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Now, item fifty one, we have a correction. Order authorizing issuance of the following checks to the tax collector. Sheriff Nance for an act. One is for taxes previously paid by Riverboat Golden Nugget. I thought they were gonna apply that to their future taxes. This says you're issuing a check. Did I get bad information?
I don't know, let me, let me test and find out.
Thing Mr. McAdams told me, this is gonna be.
I don't know what the agreement was, and it should be.
There were, there were, it was a five year, there was a five year period, I think three of them were, I may have this backwards, but three were to offset again, or vice versa, and other two, other three were reimbursements, so like for the first three years. Anyway, partially, part were credit, part were reimbursement.
No, I was told by Mr. McAdams that this would all, unless I misunderstood him, that this would all be credited. I'm only speaking of the golden nugget now, that that would be credited, so would you confirm that?
Could you ask them what they wanted? Maybe that would be the, if they want a credit or something.
He told me. But I won't put words in his mouth.
This is gonna mess up all their books.
It is, that's why I figured they'll take the credit. And then the twenty five fifty two forty one for Kim Pham, the refund should be for the year twenty nineteen, not twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I have a motion to amend and correct, uh, uh, number fifty one B.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
From twenty to, to, to correct the date, twenty to twenty nineteen.
Now we need to vote on the actual order, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
John said it's a credit.
So there will not be.
So there's a check out of it?
Credit.
So there won't be a check? Says issue of the checks.
So how do I fix this now? Why do you have to vote?
Okay, let's resend, you want to resend the whole thing? Let's resend the.
Motion to resend item fifty one A.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. Now, do we all need a motion to, to the tax collector to apply that amount for future taxes?
This should be, the, the order should read.
Credit those amounts to those particular taxes.
We got a motion to credit that a particular amount to the, uh, that's fifty one. We got a motion to credit that a particular amount to the, that's fifty-one A.
Second.
To the taxpayer.
Second.
You got a second?
I make a motion authorizing the issuance of tax credit.
We already got, we already got a motion, second. He said that.
I mean, I heard it, but I just think it'd be easier to do that if you said authorizing the tax credit for reimbursement, anyway.
All those in favor signify by aye. I suppose, motion carries. Item fifty-two.
Heard it, I just thought it could be more specific.
Order acknowledging receipt of letter from Harrison County Prosecutor Herman Cox requesting salary increase to a hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred. As per Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two, salary increase to be effective January one, twenty twenty-one, including budget amendment for the same.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mandatory?
Oh, too fast.
This is mandatory?
Thank you, isn't that right?
Yes, mandatory.
The judge has got a phrase, and so then he makes a certain percentage of the judge's.
If salary is tied in to the percentage of the judges.
How come we can't get tied to anybody?
So is this, so the point that we missed is when we.
Marlon, did we get tied up to somebody?
When we voted, when we voted on the judge's basis when they made anybody first.
So it would be, it would be back.
Yesterday.
Perfect, thank you.
We didn't mean to leave you out.
No problem.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you all, have a good day.
Item fifty-three. Order acknowledging receipt of certificate of approval of the Mississippi Department of Revenue or Revenue Real and Personal Property Tax Assessment Goals for the First and Second Judicial Districts of Harrison County, Mississippi, for the year twenty twenty. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four. Order approving continuation of proclamation of the existence of a local emergency within Harrison County due to the spread of COVID-nineteen. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
I have discussion. It says twenty to fifty people in outside of events. It says near.
Well, right now, we're just extending our proclamations.
Well, the governor's, are we keeping up with the governor's proclamation just to, so, so that we can pass that on to Ballfields and stuff? I don't know.
I think we're simply telling them they have to buy that. We don't tell what the proclamation is. That's their responsibility.
Maybe Bobby should.
Yeah. Can Bobby give them, can we make copies available so that Parks and Rec and Farm, Farm, and all that? Can you get a copy?
I think we just started because it was changing so frequently that it was better when Tim made the signs. It just said all the things warning COVID ended at the bottom, must be in accordance with the most current. I think that's better than printing them out.
I can, I can make sure Bobby has links on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-five. Order designated Pam Mollrich and Matt Stratton as applicant. Agents for FEMA public assistance for Hurricane Cedar and authorize Board President to execute all necessary documents.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six. Order authorizing improvement of fair enough grade of basketball courts, John Anne Rebecca Park within the city of Biloxi as per the terms of interlocal governmental cooperation agreement between the city and Harrison County. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven. Order approving commercial sixteen section land lease agreement between Harrison County School District and Ronnie and Catherine Bureau for real property located in section sixteen, Township Six, South Ranch Eleven, West and the First Judicial District and authorize the Board President to execute the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight. Order authorizing improvement of leasing county voting equipment to the City of Ashworth Jan for the city's twenty twenty-one municipal elections. Do we have a motion? Motion. Do we have a second?
Second discussion. The City of Ashworth Jan participated in the purchase of any of that, they did?
No.
Go on.
Gulfport and Biloxi.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine. Order authorizing improvement of use of voting equipment by the City of Biloxi for the city's twenty twenty-one municipal elections.
Motion.
Do we got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion, we are only referring to the voting machines, right? Not the bags or the stickers or things.
It says voting.
I think Jennifer has anticipated that.
My opinion is they're getting the actual machines and the booths and ballot bags and boxes and.
Even during COVID?
Well, the sanitation and the PPE, I think some of the cities might be providing that, but I don't know that she is, the circuit clerk has attached a fee for any of the Biloxi class, any of the items of that nature.
We need to specify what it is they're asking for. Because wanting pens, that's something we're never going to get back. Equipment, those bags, we're going to have to replace them. I think the City of Biloxi is only looking at the machine, action machine. But we might be getting some requests for other stuff. All right, I'm sorry, I'm on my high horse. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty. Order G K with tax sales of August twenty-six, twenty nineteen and August third, one, twenty twenty on tax parcels as listed for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen taxes as erroneous and thus void app innitiaire. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion.
They, these parcels had previously been toured to the state, so they just weren't classified as non-legal.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-one. Order G K with tax sales of August twenty-six, twenty nineteen on the parcels as listed as erroneous and thus void app innitiaire for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion.
The same reason that these parcels have been toured to the state as well.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-two. Order approving extension of the First Baptist Church couple of misproperty usage and divinity agreement in accordance with the terms of the contract for an additional two-year term. Current agreement term ends February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. As a voting precinct, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-three. Order approving extension of the Covey United Methodist Church in Biloxi. Same reason for voting precinct, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have some of them notes that Shaw should have a copy of? I'll start with the first one. Order approving a no objection ruling for parcel number zero two one two zero zero two zero eight zero and supporting a DM or permit application to build a bulkhead on said property and adjacent orders. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Where is this?
Discussion, that's in the Henderson area, and we've done this on several occasions. What they do, they buy these lots, and next to these lots are properties that are parcels, the small parcels that've been set aside as what we call quote parks. And this gentleman, and it's happened before, the park, the water comes up adjacent to his property, both the front and the side, and he wants to replace the old bulkhead. And, and I don't see any problem with that, that, that resolution, if you read it, says that he, he responsible for the maintenance of it as well as he, it cannot, cannot avoid any public access to the parking sale.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item V. Order approving the vacation of a twenty-five foot plaid road right away adjacent to county parcel zero three zero five eight zero, zero zero one. And another county parcel, bulkhead of the county's commencement interest thereof to Brandon and Janet Dooley. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I, second discussion, I don't know where this is.
Yeah, there's not enough info.
There's not, I, I'd like to move to table until we find out where.
Yeah, because we're quick, we're, uh, D to these folks, to these parcels.
So we have a substantive motion to table?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item three. Order approving ratifying and affirming a disaster assistance housing grant agreement with meaning to assist with homeowner repairs incurred as a result of Hurricane Cedar and MOU with the Gulf Coast Community Foundation for Grant Administration Services.
No, sorry.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item D. Order approving request.
The discussion, the, the, I know, Mississippi, yeah, we went back, Mississippi, and we just got this. Mississippi emergency.
That was actually a correction from the last, we, we affirmed by a MOU with the foundation, but the grant actually, we should have affirmed with the meaning. So this is basically a correction.
Thank you. I remember voting on it.
Item D. Order approving request for proposal for reform administrative case management for emergency rental assistance for Harrison County funded through U.S. Department of Treasury and having the county administrator the authority to execute. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr. Ladner, do you have anything?
No, I don't think of it.
Mr. Jones?
I don't have it.
I do have one, I didn't know if you wanted to bring that up with regard to the City of Gulfport's email or election equipment, we don't have the resolution.
We don't have a resolution from the city, we have to have a resolution from the city in order to act upon.
All right, so we'll cancel that. And I did have a resolution from.
Do you notify them, tell them they have, they have to send a resolution?
Yeah.
We're sent with.
Connie told. I have one late, I don't see it here. Now, I'm waiting on a resolution from, do you have a real of that lone with circles since I don't have it, I'll just put it on hold. Is there anything else? It's Tori who took care of all your stuff.
Which way?
Angela's got something.
Mr. McGannam just called. So on the issuance of those two checks, it's not a credit. The money has to go into the general fund. And then checks will be cut from Sharon Nash Barnett tax collector for the Riverboat and Kim Pham.
So we're back to having to do a check as a credit?
Because these are the closed-out accounts from David LaRosa. Closed-out accounts turn the money over to the General County Fund, and then checks will be issued.
All right, we need a motion to reconsider and correct that.
It's not a credit, it will be checks issued.
It will be a credit, it will be a check. So we got a motion, Mr. Jones, we have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Rocker, what you got?
Uh, just an executive session.
Executive session. All right, Ms. Powers?
I have a request from the Admiral Diamond Booster Club at Gulfport. They were asking for seven hundred fifty dollars for the outfield wall sponsorship. Or I would prefer this two hundred dollars, that's a wall of honor sponsorships, our logo is up there.
It is advertising county resources.
Advertising county resources.
Yeah. Put that right and have them advertise.
Okay, yeah, I have that here, so just forward to break me? Yes. Okay.
So would you like to make?
I'll let you commission that we give two hundred dollars to advertise county resources through the Gulfport Booster Club.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Okay, and I, Frank Bordeaux has resigned from the HGDC since he has been appointed by the governor to head the Republican Party. And so I would like to appoint Mark Schlokal, and he's really already part of HGDC, he's just going to slide over to my position.
For his remaining on his prior term.
Correct.
Is that a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
I thought he was on the panel.
He was, but his term's kind of up.
Because Governor Brian appointed him and he and Governor Reeves aren't.
So now he's going to be a district.
Then he'll be district.
Governor having a point.
Governor having, okay, and one more thing, a sweet lady.
Okay, we need to vote, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
A sweet lady who moved here was appalled that we don't allow dogs on the beach. Arlie Flowers texted me, sent me video, said the City of Gulfport is going to allow one hour in the early morning from seven to eight to allow dogs to play on the beach.
City of Gulfport can't.
They have, they have.
I'm sorry, they have a dog, I spoke improperly, they actually have a dog park and they address, because Gulfport has a dog park, Biloxi has a dog park, Harrison County doesn't, I, I'm just, I'm just conveying.
Is it on the beach?
No, but they were just saying, we don't have, we don't have, well, Biloxi has one, she said Gulfport has one, and they were just wondering. I, I'm just the messenger, I don't care. I'll bring my dog on the beach and get sand in my car.
But that's it, most people.
Well, you get poo poo between your feet if you go on the beach.
That was a big issue about fifteen, twenty years.
So we just kind of left it like.
Okay, well.
No dogs on the beach.
Okay, anything else?
All right, that's all, I'll leave it.
Okay, Tricia's got something.
Our director vice against it. Pat Von Kast that if, if amenable, we would consider amending the verbiage.
I'm sorry, but I, I think that I had this conversation with him prior to this, so.
On number thirty?
That's part of the personnel executive session, so yeah.
Okay, sorry.
What?
Number just, what? Okay. Number thirty, I think, I think number thirty was mine.
That's what I'm saying, didn't we take?
We already failed.
Yeah.
Question of verbiage, she's giving that.
We're not going back.
Oh, we did, we denied it. Yeah, you denied.
So any question, what, were you requesting?
Were you questioning, may I hear from Ms. President?
No. I'm going to bring that up in personnel.
Okay.
Hear me.[1604.74]